Let's adjourn this meeting of the Villa Park City Council. Jared, you want to take the role?
Yes, thank you for your mayor. Councilman Mills?
Present.
Councilman Polly?
Here.
Councilman Reese?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Fasenelli?
Present.
Mayor Barnett?
Present. And now for our Pledge of Allegiance. Brad, you've been around for a long time, why don't you lead us?
You bet. Thank you. Please put your right hand over your heart, follow my lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your love and for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've got to be careful, I sometimes feel compelled to embellish that. I guess that's something I can't do. Okay, public comments we have at this point. This is where the public has an opportunity to make a presentation to the council on any items that are not already agendized. If anyone would like to make any comments, they have five minutes to do so. It won't be anything council can act on, but informally you're certainly welcome to make the comments to it. So if anybody would like to be heard on anything? There we go. Mr. Olmer. Rich, let me give you the microphone. There's one up there. There's one at the podium. Rick? That works. There you go. Good. Shall I dust it off now? Good evening, council. My name is Rich Olmer, 1-855-0-MARTINI-COURT. I came this evening because I wanted to congratulate this council in particular on its last couple of years of performance. It got the job done with four-fifths of the folks up there working on the task. And I know that meant a lot of extra work for each one of you four. But I want to thank you personally, because after eight years on council, I know those committee meetings can get long. So thank you very much for your service, in particular Mayor Barnett, former Mayor Reese, two, three times? Three times, yes. So thank you so much for everything you've done for our community over these last couple of years. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich. You've done all that and more.
Jasmine Polly, 1-8122, Glory Circle. So, I'm the blonde one's daughter. You can't tell.
This is the blonde one?
Just the blonde one. And so, this first portion's from me. The flower is a group effort from James and myself. And so, the last council meeting that I attended was when she was being sworn in. I was still in college. And I suppose that you didn't really raise me to have enough free time to be attending these, but I did catch a few on YouTube, believe it or not. And I think I've been privy to enough phone calls taking place in the home that I understand and respect the commitment level that you've upheld in your position. I've seen you... I'm going to spend the five minutes crying, is that okay? And I've seen you prepare for meetings at the kitchen table, in your office, on the back patio, reading all of the material. So as to best inform your opinion, as a citizen, I respect your intellectual approach to your time in office. It's getting really high.
I can help you. I was going to say, we have a...
Oh, is there a crying portion? There's a specific crying portion? I can wait.
It's up to you, but if you would like to stand up for a minute, I'm going to call specifically for this. So if you want to go on, you're welcome to proceed. If you'd like a minute, you're welcome to come back.
You know what? I'm going to finish my portion. Got more for you.
Go free.
I respect your intellectual approach to your time in office and your emphasis on transparent and honest government. But as your daughter, I am so proud of your service to the community. As a woman in a position of power, it has meant a great deal to me as a young woman to see you stay strong in difficult situations and to neither stray nor back down from your ideals or commitments. I love you and you always have my vote. I'm sorry I did that at the wrong time.
Let me add here that we have an item coming up where I'll invite comment from the public as to the outgoing council members. In the meantime, this is kind of an unagendized, open item that I think we're mandated to have. So if anyone needs to speak on anything, feel free. If it's on a council member, you might want to wait until I call it. But do we have any more comment? It appearing not, we'll move on to the next item. And I guess, Jared, that's a consideration of a resolution. You want to give us a quick synopsis of that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for your mayor. This is the reason we're all here tonight, is to certify the election results. The election was held November 4th for three members of the city council. Bill Nelson, Robert Bob Colacott, and Deanna Fasenelli were declared the winners. Additionally, there was a measure on the ballot, Measure II, regarding safe and sane fireworks. That was approved by the voters, and this resolution approves the ordinance, which is an attachment to that. So it will go into effect in 10 days. And it still gives council the ability to regulate and, you know, create rules for fireworks and safe and sane as we move forward. With that, let's get started. And the city's, city staff's recommendation is to approve Resolution 2014-3302, reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 4th, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law.
Anyone, you have any public comment on this? Any council comment or questions on it?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say, let's...
I'll say.
Can you second?
Yep.
Already got it? Okay. Jared, call the vote.
Yes, thank you for your mayor. Councilman Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Polly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes, absolutely.
Motion carries.
Item two, now we get into the bittersweet issues. These are kind of sad from my perspective. I've spent a lot of time with these council members. We are going to have any comments by the public attributable to, attributable to Council and Polly or Councilman Reese at this point. So any of you that would like to speak on those issues are welcome to approach the podium, identify yourself and be heard. Okay. There appearing to be none. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. A little too hasty.
Good evening. My name is Melissa March. I'm here on behalf of Supervisor Todd Spitzer. And on behalf of Supervisor Todd Spitzer, we'd like to recognize Brad Reese for serving the Villa Park City Council. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication while serving the city and the residents of Villa Park. Please join me congratulating Brad for his service.
All right. Any comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
One more. Sorry. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for this time. What we'd like, I'm here on behalf of Chief Jeff Bowman from the Orange County Fire Authority. My name is Chris Concepcion, I'm your local fire chief. But we really wanted to thank Councilman Brad Reese for his service on our board as both a board member and also as an alternate for eight years, I believe. So, job well done. And also, we all know that Councilmember Reese was a longtime reserve firefighter. You probably have more years on the fire service than I do. So, I wanted to thank you very much for that time also, so.
James Dana Polly IV, 1-8122, Glory Circle, Villa Park, California. I'm here reading my father's remarks for my mother first, as he cannot be here with us today, and then I will give short and brief ones of my own. From my dad, honey. "I am sorry I cannot be with you tonight, as you say goodbye to the city council. During the past eight years, I've watched you tirelessly work for the betterment of our city. I have been continually impressed with how loyal you have been to your conservative principles and belief in smaller, more inclusive government. You have always maintained credibility with your constituents, working for a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. You were always accessible to the citizens' concerns, and though it was sometimes annoying listening to you walk around the house talking, you walk and talk a lot, I knew you were helping real people with real problems. As you conclude your time on the city council, please know that I, your closest confidant, am proud of the integrity you displayed and the positive results you helped achieve. You closed this chapter of your life on a high note, and I know that the forthcoming chapters will bring even greater fulfillment. I love you, and I am proud of you, always, but especially today." Jim.
Thank you for doing that.
And from my own, I just want to say, for the past eight years, this has been the constant in our lives. You have been the city council member, you have been Deborah Polly, city council, or woman?
Yeah.
To this day, I believe you're the only person any of my friends knew has ever been on the city council. And... Sorry. And it gives me great pride to know that you've served our city. Small government has always been very important to me. I know it's very important to you and your roots. And for the past eight years, I know that you haven't flexed, you haven't bent on any issue. Thank you.
You sweetheart.
No greater accomplishment than to have your children speak so highly of you. Brad, I want to thank you for your service. The community thanks you for the eight years, your services as mayor, your work and diligent work with our fire authority, and the leadership you've shown our city. And we appreciate that, including the celebration of our anniversary of the city. And although you had to read your notes.
I was nervous, man.
I know. Well, it was a great time, and we all enjoyed it. And your presence was representative of our community, so thank you. Deborah, I want to thank you also. You have been a model of what I consider democratic process in government. You aren't afraid to speak your piece even when you know there is opposition. You form your decisions carefully but through thorough review of the facts. And many, many citizens in this town appreciate the fact that you gave so much of your time to not only make the decision, but to get their viewpoints and consider them before you made your decision. And even though you stood firm when you, against opposition, including this council and previous councils, you were right, in my opinion, and in the opinion of the majority of the citizens, as proven by the votes that you achieved twice. So thank you very much. Mary is not here, because she would do a better job of thanking you. She's on our grandchildren swim tonight, and she's doing the, once a week, we do the duty of picking them up from their workouts. But she wanted me to tell you that she appreciated that and the wonderful job you did at emcey in the Orange County Republican Women's Luncheon last week. I wanted to also add that you've distinguished yourself as a person throughout the community of the county and even the state. John Morlock is very high on you. I think you're going to go to other places in this, in the state and county, and I know you will represent us well. And we take pride in the fact that you are one of our homegrown and one that we can count on if we have a question, and one who'll stand in defense of crime and look into it and give us a response as soon as possible, as soon as you get the facts. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you've done. Okay?
Thank you, Wayne.
And the rest of council, welcome to a new year and a new council. I'm sure you'll all be fine. Thanks.
Kind of casual compared to everybody else. MJ Lucero, 18-501, Jacquetal Avenue. I'm relatively a newcomer to Villa Park. We just celebrated our five-year anniversary on December 5th. And what I want to say is, what I've noticed about the city council is that you set your sights high. You go out, you talk to the people to find out what's going on, how they feel. I have learned so much watching individual people on the council, especially my friend Deborah, who has really opened my eyes as to what the city council is all about. She is fair and balanced. I wonder where I got that phrase from? And for that, I really appreciate it. Brad, congratulations on being the past mayor, and I wish all of you well, and stay in contact with us, and best of luck on the new council. Thank you.
My name is Mary Beth Thelson, 9622, Feather Hill Drive, Villa Park. I'm on a committee called Protecting the Hidden Jewel, and we're working on solving traffic safety problems. When we started this project eight months ago, we did not know how to proceed. We listened to the city council, we talked to all of the board members, but I want to thank Brad and you, Deborah, for giving us, explaining how government works, pushing us on the way, giving us insights of how the process works. It's taken us a long way, and we're making real progress, but we only did it with all of your help. So, thank you both. We look forward to seeing you again in the future. Call on us if we can help. Thank you.
Any other speakers on that topic? I apologize, all I got sick, and I just barely got my voice back. I guess now it's time for any comments from our city council members. Why don't we start with you, Deborah?
Thank you.
Can I make a couple comments first, please? Before she goes?
I'm sorry, I omitted the non...
Deborah, I'd like to thank you for your dedication to this city for the last eight years. It's a tough job, and sometimes not everybody's happy with the decisions that are made up here. But the decisions that are made by the individual council people are made thoughtfully and with good intentions. Your intentions have always been good. And you have served this community, you were elected twice, and I want to thank you. I also want to thank you for having me be up here, because if it was not for you, I would have never attempted to run for city council. And because of you explaining how government works, that led me, with three small children years ago, to think about it. So you planted the seed. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice.
Brad, I'm going to miss you. You made coming on the council so comfortable and so easy. You explained things to me. I learned from you. When I had questions, I asked them. You didn't just explain them in five minutes. You took the time to teach me, and I am going to miss that. I have enjoyed the last eight years watching you here on the council. As my children were little, I have enjoyed having you as mayor three times. I also have enjoyed getting to know your family and your wife, and there's a good future ahead of you. I'm going to miss you. Thank you.
I have a few comments as well. Ladies first, Deborah. My damer for two years now, and I want to thank you specifically how honest you are with your analysis of the problems. And I've learned a lot of how you deal with the facts that you're analyzing. I appreciate it very much. I've learned a lot from you and a lot of the comments that you give me here on the dais. I really appreciate that very much, and I always remember that. But I also want to know, let everyone know that Deborah is driven to perfection, and I appreciate that very much. I think that's come out with other things folks have said tonight. I'm going to miss sitting next to you. I really will.
I'll miss you too.
Brad, I've known you for several years before the council, and, you know, I really liked working with you on the different committees that we've had together, again with the fire authority, as being an alternate with you, and of course with the sanitation district. You've taken the time, as Deanna mentioned, to take the time, not a quick survey, but an in-depth accounting of what needs to be done. And of course, you're a great team player. We'd love to have you, of course, working with the fire authority. And I also want to thank you for being a volunteer fireman for so, so many years. And of course, I enjoyed going and backing you up at some of those meetings out there on Jambree Road, too. Brad, going to miss you very much. Thank you. Thank you both for your service to this city.
Well, I guess that leaves me. I was going to make my comments in conjunction with the proclamations, but I see these as kind of the conclusion, so I think I'll make them now and move on from there. Deborah, I'm blatantly, brutally honest as you. And, you know, I think I've agreed with you on most everything that's occurred up here. You're incredibly conservative, even more than I. We've had our philosophical differences clearly on issues, but I have to say that I do truly respect you, and I really appreciate your dedication and commitment to our system of government. Because regardless of what the issues may be, you do look at them, you research them thoroughly, and you're truly committed to this country and this system of government. And for that, you know, I truly appreciate that, and thank you for that, for that commitment.
Thank you.
And Brad, this is particularly difficult, saying goodbye to Brad. You know, I'm more short-patience and kind of terse, a little short on the patience, and perhaps a little more emotional than I would like to be at times. And Brad is, Brad Reese, I've gotten to know very well, is just an incredibly good human being. Brad is stable, low-key, and if you want to get a nice, stable evaluation of an issue that's totally committed, totally focused on the community's interests and not your own, talk to Brad. So Brad has been an incredible sounding board. I've had almost no philosophical differences. I've seen eye to eye on Brad on almost every issue that's come before council. Incredible human being, and I'm sincerely going to miss you. It's not going to be the same up here without you, but I am looking forward to the new council. I do like the new council members. I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be, it's going to be a change of pace and an exciting new event, but it doesn't change the laws here. So I'm sincerely going to miss you, and I don't want to say.
Thank you, Rich.
That said, I guess, why don't we just step down here in front and let me present the two of you with your proclamations? Jared gave you that microphone here. So, I believe these are the same, except for the names. It's a proclamation of Deborah Polly, commending her for eight years of service on behalf of City Villa Park. Whereas in November 2006, Deborah was victorious in her run for a city council seat and was re-elected in 2010. And whereas since being elected, Deborah has utilized both her education and professional expertise to help shape the city. And whereas Deborah has served on several city committees, including Public Utilities, again, excuse my voice, City Schools Advisory, Technology Intended Center. Therefore, be it resolved, the entire city council, the city of Villa Park, city manager and staff members extend their sincere appreciation to councilmember Deborah Polly for her leadership and commitment during her eight years on the Villa Park City Council, and we wish you success in all of your future endeavors. And let me add that I meant to wish you happiness in all of your future endeavors up there, and I slipped and forgot, so.
Thank you so much.
Brad, whereas in November 2006, Brad was victorious in his run for a city council seat, he was re-elected in 2010, and is a three-time mayor in 2008, 2012, and 2013. Whereas since being elected, Brad has utilized both his education and professional expertise to help shape the city. And whereas Brad has served on various regional committees and commissions throughout Orange County, including the Orange County Fire Authority, Orange County Sanitation District, as well as several city committees, including Budget and Finance, Human Resources, Public Utilities, Community Development and Public Safety, and City Schools and Advisory. Be it resolved, the entire city council, the city of Villa Park, city manager and staff extend their sincere appreciation to councilmember Brad Reese for his leadership and commitment during his eight years on the Villa Park City Council, and we wish you success in all your future endeavors. Thank you. Deborah, before you depart, are there any comments you'd like to make?
I would. Is it, we're there now?
We're there.
We're there now. Well, I appreciate, I definitely appreciate all the kind words from my colleagues on the council. I made some notes that I could just get through this quickly, and hopefully I won't be like my daughter and dissolve into tears. I'm kind of glad she went early so I could get over it. It has really been a privilege to serve as your councilwoman these past eight years. It was an honor to be elected twice by my fellow citizens, and it was important to me that I not disappoint those who had shown their confidence in my sincere desire to demonstrate excellence in public service. I really love our little city. The entire eight years, when I would be at different events, I would introduce myself when I was asked to do so as Councilwoman Deborah Polly from the tiny but mighty city of Villa Park. I really think that should be our motto, tiny but mighty, because that's what we are. We may be the Orange County's tiniest city, but we are mighty because we have smart, accomplished, and engaged citizenry. We are really wealthy in that way, the resources. I've tapped into those resources during my time here, sending out what I like to call sanity checks. It might be an email blast, or it might just be to 10 or 15 people, or it might just be to specific individuals that I know have subject matter expertise, sending them, you know, an email asking, what do you think of this? To get that feedback, because I know I don't know everything, and I don't pretend to. I want to truly represent. It's been my goal to affirm our position as the poster child for what good governance should look like, by staying focused on only those things government should be involved in, working within our means, not incurring debt, being responsive to citizen input and concerns, and preserving traditional American values. I have placed value on honesty, forthrightness, hard work, personal responsibility, humility, respectful public discourse and debate, equitable application of our ordinances, removing or reducing unnecessary rules or fees, and responsible use of taxpayer dollars, and above all else, transparency in government. Citizens have a right to know what their government is up to, and as council members, it's our responsibility to make sure that they do know that. There are a couple of specific accomplishments that have brought me great satisfaction. When I first got elected, I had a to-do list, and number one on my to-do list was the restructure of VPTV. We accomplished that. It took some time... of VPTV. We accomplished that. It took some time to do so, but we have a whole new studio with new, state-of-the-art equipment. We have cameras mounted on the sides and in the back instead of tripods that kids are tripping over. We've, we've saved a lot of general fund dollars through doing that, because we were subsidizing the operation as it had been run. We brought better government transparency through that organization, because it allowed not only those individuals who subscribe to Time Warner, but AT&amp;T or maybe had none of those, to be able to watch our council meetings live, streaming on the internet, or go back and review them on the archive on demand. That is transparency. This way, people can see what's happening, what was said, and who said what. That's one of my, my top accomplishments, and I'm glad that we did that. And we don't get complaints anymore about sound quality, which was something that we heard all the time. People can actually hear what's going on. Within the first two months, through an act of, the city council established the Villa Park City Schools Advisory Committee. I thought it was important for us to focus in on just what was happening inside our borders with the four schools, instead of going to the larger Orange City Schools Committee. I was allowed to serve on that for the first year, and then, for whatever reason, was removed by the mayor, and I'm very sorry that I never had an opportunity to see that through to the end, because I think we could've made some progress there. Also, enacting the Do Not Solicit ordinance. This, it was an idea that came about through walking precincts, and when I would walk door to door to door, every single porch had piles of paper that had been left by people who were soliciting, and most people complained about that. But about a year into my time on the council, someone told me about someone going to their front door, ringing the bell. It was, they thought, a solicitor, and so the wife didn't answer the door, went on about her business, but in fact, it wasn't a solicitor. It was, it was a criminal who went around to the back of the house to break in, and that's what spawned the Do Not Solicit ordinance. And I know from my own perspective that we've reduced the amount of, of paper that's left on our porches, but it's also given our law enforcement an additional tool, and we're going to need all the tools we can get. Another area that has been a big focus of mine was growing our undesignated reserve funds. We did that as a team, and we've done that for the past several years. When I first got on the council, we had about $600,000 in our reserve fund. Now we're at 1.3 million. That's a significant, significant growth. And I want to, at this time, talk a little bit about Michelle, because she is, she's a true treasure for us as a city, but I'm positive that there were a lot of changes that were made to our budget to accommodate my myriad questions, because I wanted us to be able to understand it. I'm a layperson. It's not like sight-reading music for me. It's hard work, but she massaged the budget over the course of many years, listening to my questions, to the point where anybody can pick up our budget and understand exactly what's going on. And I want to thank you for putting up with all of those questions. One of the other small things was advancing the Safe Routes to School project along center, because I kept watching a mom walking her kid into the street because she couldn't get around poles that were in the middle of the sidewalk. That seems like a small thing, but we're trying to encourage people to walk their kids to school. They can't do it if there are poles in the middle of the sidewalk, and that mother was very, very thankful for that small project. Also, with the help of Mayor Bill McAloni, who was a great mentor to me all along the way, establishing the Town Center Improvement Committee, and reaching out to repair relationships with both the property owners and the business owners that had somehow been damaged over the years, asking them what it was that they needed, what they wanted us to do to make things easier for them, to revitalize our town center. We've come a long way, and we're continuing, I think, to see that, that happen. This is another small thing, but I'm a patriotic American, and spearheading the new flagpole that's in front of our, our city hall was, was a big deal to me. We had flag retreat ceremonies here, and I would be kind of embarrassed at our tiny little flagpole and the squeak, squeak, squeak with it coming down. When I'd go to City of Orange and they'd have this beautiful flagpole, and, my goodness, the, they couldn't go slow enough to, in our city, to keep up with taps, to have it actually come down at the right period of time, so, because it was so short. I thought our flagpole should at least be as big as the one in front of the grocery store. But I wanted to thank the, the men who serve on the Board of Serrano Water District, who also serve on the Irvine Lake Recreation Committee that helped make that funding possible for us to have that new flagpole. I'm very proud of it. And we began flying the city's flag in front of city hall for the first time in Villa Park's 50-year history, and it is flying there today. And so, that's a small accomplishment, but it's a statement. It's a statement for our city. Also, and this is, this is the last thing, it was a big deal to me. In 2008, through the initiative process, gave the residents a chance to vote on whether our national motto, "In God We Trust," would be displayed in our council chambers. We are the only city in the state who did it that way. It wasn't an edict of the city council. It was put before the voters so that they had an opportunity to, to weigh in on it. Nearly 80% of the voters affirmed that we still rely on a holy and righteous God to guide us. Through this entire time, with the highs and the lows, I have prayed for the city, for its safety, and for God to keep His mighty hand over us. I have prayed for wisdom to make the right decision for your, on your behalf. That's just true. I have some regrets. I regret that we were not able to begin our city council meetings with an invocation. It's something I thought we should do. It happens every place else I go, but not here. They even have a moment of silence at Serrano Water District, even though there are only six people standing in that room, but yet we don't have it here in a fine city like ours. I would still like the city to address our business license process and abolish the administrative fee that we charge. That's a regret. And of course, it really saddens me that I was never able to earn the respect and confidence of my colleagues on this council, to the point where they could see their way clear to select me as their mayor. But it is what it is. I want to thank staff. I gotta say a couple words about Jared. When I first ran for city council and lost, the first time I ran, I was fighting a bond measure. It's funny, I began my career fighting a bond measure, I ended my career fighting a bond measure. I won both times. But anyway, Jared was just an intern, and I called up here to ask some questions, and he, the way he answered the phone was just horrible, and I called the city manager, and I said, "You've got to straighten that kid out and teach that young man how to answer the phone." And then where we've watched him just blossom and develop, and here you are now, the city manager, and I have really enjoyed watching that process. I'm really proud of you, and I'm thankful for all the help that you provided me over the years, and I'm thankful for that. Travis, you've got somebody to look up to and to learn from. Michelle, I've already tapped you a little bit on, on the wonderful things that you've done to help me and make our budget look better. It's easy to read. And Jennifer, I learned a lot about planning from you, and I thank you for all the assistance that you provided with goals that I had set forward. Couldn't have done it without you. You bring a level of expertise that we've never had here before. Finally, I want to thank the residents for the confidence they placed in me and the tremendous support they provided to me through these years. Some of them were difficult times, and yet you came up and stood beside me and kept me strong, and I'm thankful. I met some really great people along the way. And then I want to thank my family, my husband, my daughter, my son, wonderful Americans. They had to put up with a couple of, you know, takeout meals. Of course, they liked that, because there's no vegetables involved. They actually liked council meeting night. They knew they didn't have to eat vegetables that night. Dad was gonna shag a pizza. But you've been very supportive of me, and you've had to go through some hard times, too. You know, I know how difficult it can be for family members when they're watching someone they love being attacked or lies being spread about them, but you are stronger as a result of it, and I'm super proud of both of you. Just outstanding, outstanding young Americans. I'd like to wish the new council good luck. I know you are gonna do a wonderful job. I feel absolutely certain that our city remains in very good hands, and I am, I'm looking forward to watching you do that from the other side of the dais. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, okay, you did it. You got it in there. And now Brad's gonna make his speech. Brad, anything you'd like to say before you leave us?
I'll be the first to admit, when I was asked to run and sit up here, I thought it was a joke. I had no desire whatsoever. I have no formal training. I'm not a politician. I don't even like politics, and I thought, "You gotta be kidding me." I was encouraged to do this by some of the firemen at Fire Station 23, and I was really mentored in this seat by Fire Chief and ex-mayor of Villa Park, Chief and Mayor Bob Bell. Bob was terming out of city council. He had been on city council for, gosh, was it 18 years? 16 years, long, long time. And Bob started the Villa Park Fire Station many years ago. So the fire guys thought, "Well, Brad, you've done this 28 years as a reserve fireman. You would, your kids are a little bit older than some of the other firemen's kids. You would, you would be, do a great job to help represent the city of Villa Park to the Orange County Fire Authority." And I, I said no about four different times over the span of many, many, many weeks, and finally I saw, oh, I thought, "Okay, I guess, I'll try it," you know. I love this city. My wife and I moved here 16 years ago, and we feel extremely blessed to be here, and I thought, "Okay, maybe I can give back." The one thing I knew I had was good common sense. The good Lord gave that to me. I use that every day. I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, I'll tell you that, but I'll tell you what, I have good common sense. And I thought, "Okay, I'll try." So here I sit, and I gotta tell you, I'm really happy I did. The first four years, I did it. I really enjoyed it. I also have a family and a business to run, and it does take some time. I wasn't gonna run the next four years, and in the last 15 minutes of having to put your name in the hat, I said, "Ah, heck with it." I wasn't gonna do it. I thought, "Four years is good. I'm good. I'm glad I did it. It's been great." So the last 15 minutes, I know you remember that, Jared, I, "Okay, fine. Here you go. I'll do it again." And again, I'm so glad I did. I would encourage any resident to do this. It is very rewarding. You learn a lot. You meet a lot of neat people, and you make a lot of good friends. So I am gonna miss this, very much so. I've enjoyed it very much. I've learned so much. I can't believe how much I've learned that I had no idea went on behind the scenes. I also, when I got on city council, I was really mentored by a special friend who was up here as well, ex-mayor, Rich Olmer. Rich Olmer really mentored me and, and told me all about this job, what's it about, and this and that, and both Bob and Rich really helped me a lot to get on the council and learn everything, and that was really neat. I want to thank my wife for her patience in putting up with me at the fire station and here all these years. I have a great family and a great wife, and I just couldn't be more blessed to, she's my best friend, 34 years. I'm just stoked, and it does take a lot of time, and I gotta say, I really appreciate the time she has given me to do this. I want to wish the new council good luck. I've, I'm very confident in the new council as well. I know they're gonna do a great job. The city's in good hands. I, my wife's a little concerned, "What are you gonna do with your free time?" You know, it's like, wow. And it is weird. Everything's kinda happening at once in, in my life, it seems like. I've got a business that's having some rough times right now, so obviously I'm gonna invest more time there, and I'm just kind of excited to see what the Lord has for me. I'm just putting it up to Him, and whatever He wants me to do, I'm gonna do. So I'm excited about that for the future, and I'm gonna miss this place. City staff, I'm gonna miss all of you guys. You've all done such a great job. It has been fun to watch you grow, Jared. Amazing to watch a transformation in yourself. We have a very good city staff. Citizens feel in, in great shape about them. They're awesome. So I guess those are my comments. Thank you.
You're truly going to be missed, Brad. I assure you.
Oh, believe you, I'm gonna miss everyone up here.
With that, I guess it's time to have our existing council step down and head on back to the private sector.
Time to hit the road.
Yep.
All right.
Yep, and make, make room for our, for our, I don't know whether to say tired or energized. That was, that was a heck of an election. I'd like to make a brief, off-the-hoof comment to the new council members before they're sworn in. I just wanted to thank you guys for what you went through to get this position. I monitored that election to some extent, and, and it was a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of hot walking streets, and I think even more money than usual, you know, to get a non-paying position. We're, we're, the only thing you, you do is you can come up here and spend your time trying to figure out how to maybe make it, how you can improve the city, you know, for others, so, yourself as well, but for the time expended, you could do a lot more for yourself. So there really isn't much explanation, other than, you know, climbing the ladder, and I know that happens in some cases, but what I'm seeing, most of our council members, they're not political ladder climbers. They're not even politicians. I'm not. I got here pretty much the same way Brad did. You know, they're here to, to serve, help their own city, get involved in the community, be a part of it, get what enjoyment they get out of that, and see what they can do to improve things and get their shot at, at, you know, improving the community and, and help at others. And to do that, they had to do a lot, money and time, a lot of it, very trying. And this election particularly so. I'm glad I didn't have to go through that. So, you know, God bless you guys. You did a heck of a job, and, you know, community, you know, put the votes out, and you're here, and you're certainly welcome, and despite missing Brad, I'm looking forward to having you guys here. And with that, unless there's any other council comments at this point, I'll have, ask Jared to...
Absolutely.
...the oath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, it is time to administer the oath to office in seating of our newly elected council members. I would like to invite Councilmember-elect Bill Nelson to the floor, along with his granddaughter, Jasmine Strickland, who will perform his oath of office.
I, Bill Nelson...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States...
...to the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...and the Constitution of the State of California...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...that I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation...
...without any mental reservation...
...or purpose of evasion...
...or purpose of evasion...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
...that I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties...
...discharge the duties...
...upon which I am about to enter...
...upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Any other things?
At this time, I'd like to invite Councilmember-elect Robert Colacott...
Welcome.
Along with Wayne Sizell.
Bob, would you hold this Bible? Government is founded on this principle of, you were created because of God, and I would like to have you hold my personal Bible that I was given to me when I was 12 years old.
I've been very honored.
Bob, state your name.
Robert Colacott.
Do you solemnly swear that I, that you, that I will support... Well, repeat after me, all right? Do you solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will, I take this obligation freely?
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. I wanted to add one more comment. Bob is, has come, came to me for how to run a campaign very early on, and I said, "There's nothing to it. Just walk every street, meet as many residents as you can, ask questions so that you can represent them when you get up there." And that's the way I ran for 10 years on the city council, and it was a pleasure, just as Brad said and Deborah said. It's a growing experience. And I think we've got a great new council in both Bill and Bob. Good luck on the board.
Thank you, Andy. As for... I'd like to invite Councilmember-elect Deanna Fasenelli. And I have the honor of... Do you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Deanna Fasenelli.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will, I take this obligation freely?
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
I wanted to add one more comment. Bob is, has come, came to me for how to run a campaign very early on, and I said, "There's nothing to it. Just walk every street, meet as many residents as you can, ask questions so that you can represent them when you get up there." And that's the way I ran for 10 years on the city council, and it was a pleasure, just as Brad said and Deborah said. It's a growing experience. And I think we've got a great new council in both Bill and Bob. Good luck on the board.
Thank you, Andy. As for... I'd like to invite Councilmember-elect Deanna Fasenelli. And I have the honor of... Do you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Deanna Fasenelli.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully?
And I will, well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Well, with those matters concluded, I guess it's time to declare the office of mayor, and mayor pro temp vacant.
Comments by the newly elected.
Excuse me?
The comments from the newly elected council members.
Oh, I'm sorry. A little too hasty. Well, that's my trademark. I apologize. But why don't we, why don't we start at the left? That's what I've been doing so far, so no point in discriminating. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all the Villa Park residents for coming out to vote, and I certainly appreciate your confidence in electing me to the, to the city council. I also like to thank all of my friends and supporters that made my campaign successful. I want to thank you for talking to your friends, your neighbors, you know, all those people that endorsed me, yard signs, if you let me put signs in your yards, and most specifically for all the great advice that you gave me. You know, I'm looking forward to the challenges that lie ahead, and I will do my very best to represent the values and concerns of the city. But most of all, I want to thank my family that's here and some of my out-of-town friends. And I call each one, if you'd like for you, Lisa, to hold your hand up or stand up. First of all, I want to start with, you don't have to hold your hand up yet, Deb. I haven't called you yet. That's my granddaughter back there that... First of all, I want to thank my lovely wife, you know, the love of my life, Ms. Yula Nelson, who I could not do any of this without her. That's Yula back there. Also, I have a couple of my sons here. First of all, is Tony Nelson. He's from Rancho Cucamonga in Montebello. And my second son, Brandon Nelson, that's here from Brook, all the way from, from Brooklyn, New York. Yeah. My daughter, Phyllis Harris, here from Houston, Texas. And her daughter and my granddaughter, Jasmine Strickland, all the way from San Luis Obispo. I have at, at least, I thought, two nieces, but I know I've got one niece here, Ms. Gabrielle Nelson-Moore from Columbia, Maryland. I've got my cousin here, Mr. Brian Wood, all the way from Huntsville, Alabama. I've got my fellow realtor, current council member, and former mayor of Norwalk, Ms. Sherry Kelly. My district council, Mr. Steve Quintonella from Palm Springs. And last but not least, two of my very longtime friends, Josh and Ross Howell from Oceanside, California. Thanks, thanks to all of you, and thanks to all of you for, for your support.
Thank you, Bill. Bob?
Thank you.
Lead, lead away.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the residents of Villa Park for the honor to serve on council. My objective on council will be to enhance public safety, improve our streets and other infrastructure to better serve our residents, and promote physical responsibility. A specific personal interest will be to promote programs to support our senior community. I'll also seek opportunities to engage more of our residents in improving our city. I'm fortunate that both of our outgoing city council representatives, Deborah Pauley and Brad Reese, supported my candidacy and provided me with guidance, as did past councilman Wayne Sizell and his wife, Mary. I'd like to thank them for their support and guidance, and will continue to turn to them and to others and other past city councilmen for guidance while on council. I'd especially like to thank people that helped me with my campaign, again, the, the many people that allowed me to put signs on their property, that provided me with support and encouragement. And I'd especially like to thank Mike and Donna Buxton, Tim and Leanna Cronin, and Jack and Carol Stevens for their encouragement and support. They know me, and they believe I can make a difference, and I will. Finally, I'd like to thank my campaign manager, Mary Beth Thelson, for nudging me to run for council. It's something I'd been on my bucket list, something I'd wanted to do for a long time, and I'd been encouraged by others, but she finally pushed me over the edge. As you all know, or many of you know, I, I walked the entire city, and I knocked on every door during the campaign, and I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed meeting all the people in the city. Although I've been a resident here for 33 years, I thought I knew the city. But after knocking on the doors and meeting everybody and actually seeing the streets, you really get to know it. And I think that's going to give me a lot of insight and understanding of our city to better serve our community. I look forward to the opportunity to serve our city for the next four years, and thank you very much. Mayor, if I may jump in, I believe we have one more presentation, and that is Ms. Melissa March from Spitzer-Vizer, Spitzer-Vizer, Supervisor Todd Spitzer's office.
Welcome to the podium.
That's a new one. I haven't heard that before. Again, Melissa March, Supervisor Spitzer's office. On behalf of Supervisor Spitzer, we would like to congratulate Deanna Fasenelli, Robert Colacott, and Bill Nelson for being re-elected or re-elected to the Villa Park City Council. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Hi. Wedding.
Hi.
Hi, welcome. Bob, you're welcome. Bill, we're going to make a nice team up here. We're going to work hard for our city. Thank you to the residents of Villa Park for coming out and voting for whoever you voted for, whether it was the three of us or the others who took the chance and ran and put their heart and soul into it. This community is a beautiful one, one that I love living here for. I love watching the people grow up here, and I love watching the young children. I have three children sitting here in the front row, Philip, Sophia, and Fred. And everything I do, I do for them, even this. One day, they're going to understand that. They don't quite get it now. Thank you. All of us here are here to serve you, and we look forward to you telling us what you need, what the community needs, and what we need to do. Thank you.
Well, before we proceed, Deanna, I'd like to thank you for slowing me down and keeping me on track on the agenda from time to time. I probably should go by the nickname Rocket Rick because I'm always ready to roll on this thing. I should let the community know, I've already met with Bob and Bill, and I assure the community they, they've got an agenda ready to roll. These guys are, they're, they're ready to move forward, and I'm appreciative for all the effort you guys have put into that. With those comments, and unless anybody else has anything else to say at any level, then I'll get back to where I was, and I will declare the offices of mayor and mayor pro temp vacant. And I will ask Jared that you would take over and conduct our election for a new mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I will read the following historical procedures for the election of mayor and mayor pro temp by council. The offices have been declared vacant, so I will state that nominations are open for the office of mayor. Council members need not be recognized to make a motion. No second is required, but sometimes one or more members will second to indicate endorsement. Where it appears no one else wishes to make a nomination, I will ask if there are any further nominations.
Can I make a nomination?
Sure.
I'd like to nominate Deanna Fasenelli for mayor.
Second. Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote to appoint Deanna Fasenelli as mayor. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to move out of here. I think you're probably entitled to my seat at this point. So why don't you come over and take this? You don't, you don't get my personalized gavel, though. I get to keep that.
I'll use the phone. How's that?
Actually, you'll need that, so I'll leave it. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you for the confidence in this council for nominating me. I'm going to look forward to serving as mayor for the next year.
At this time, the offices for mayor pro temp are vacant. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Greg Mills.
I get to do that. I stayed away from that when I was mayor.
You get a second.
Now I can do it.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Fasenelli?
Yes.
Do I switch seats now? Is that the...
We can switch seats.
We'll switch seats, I think we'll do it later.
And out?
That's it.
I move or adjourn?
Move or adjourn. Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Yes.
Promptly already.
Thank you.